Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Koch. I'm the Chair of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to tonight's meeting, Tuesday, January 11, 2022. We'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the opening announcement, just want to hear, do we have Ellen McIntyre? Are you on?
I'm present, yes.
Voice in the sky. Ellen, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Oh, it looks like she's saying something. Just a sec, Ellen.
I am present.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. Jen Battersby, I think I see you on as well. Do we have connection? She could be doing anything. Jen Battersby, all right. And the third number, who is, who is, who else is on over the phone?
That's me, Alexandria.
Thank you, Alexandria. You're a real trooper. All right, so now I'm going to do the opening announcement regarding COVID. Pursuant to Chapter 20, the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted both in person at the meeting location listed above and via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. In-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or even during the meeting to our zoning administrator, Jennifer Battersby. That email address is jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. I will spell it J, B as in boy, A, T as in Thomas, T as in Thomas, E, R, S as in Sam, B as in boy, Y, at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. So we've had the call, the order, pledge of allegiance, and the announcement. There's acceptance of minutes of December 14th. Is there a motion or any discussion perhaps? Any discussion about the minutes of December 14th?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Motion made and seconded. I'm just going to stick with the folks at the table, you nice people in the sky.
Well, I was not present last month.
Oh, thanks a lot, Michael. All right, then, I'm just going to be random then. Eyes in the sky. Frank?
Yep.
Aye. Steve?
Aye.
Allen?
Of course.
I'm an aye, and let's just pick on Alexandria.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Alexandria. So the motion, the motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 2021 has been?
I kind of feel excluded. I'm sorry. I say aye.
Thank you, Ellen. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing of 34 Wentworth Avenue. That is the finding regarding the building inspector's decision. There is also a tandem matter on the agenda just for clarification purposes for anybody who is trying to follow along. Then, then the fourth item on the agenda is continued public hearing 34 Wentworth Avenue, and that is on the material of the four, or maybe it's not four, the handful of, one, two, three, four variances that were requested. So we are first going to be tackling the findings application. If I remember right, the star of the show is going to be the opinion of, the opinion, the legal opinion of town council who has sent something to the board. I think that everybody has received it, or at least I've heard by a roll around the email. It's my understanding everybody has received it and reviewed it. It is not something that is available to the public. It was prepared by town council for us, the client. So she's the attorney where the client's a privileged memorandum. I will, however, hit a few highlights because it is not necessarily a comfortable thing to be so in the dark. So I'm going to read because I am, I have not mastered council's opinion. I have not mastered the laws, the timings, or anything like that. I'm going to read, so forgive me while I disappear for a moment. What I'm reading are some selections with a little bit of my editorial in order to make sure that it flows in some sense here, because we're on TV, we're always looking for Nielsen ratings, so I don't want to be too, too stuttered. I will start with, "The lot contains 4,750 square feet of lot area and has 47 and a half feet of frontage in the Arc 4 Residential District, which requires a minimum lot area of 12,500 and 100 feet of frontage. The applicant intends that the lot is protected from the dimensional requirements in the current zoning bylaw because it gained protected status under the zoning bylaw, Section 6.81, in effect in 1972. Historically, legislatively at both the state and local level, there is interfacing of 1972, 1974, and 1976 bits of legislation, legislation being the bylaw and/or state law. In 1972, the North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 6.8, provided protections that are relied on by the applicant, and in 1974, however, the bylaw was amended by adding language which set a minimum lot size to be eligible for protecting from increased lot area and frontage requirements. Then in 1976, the Massachusetts zoning act was adopted, which contains a similar provision perpetually protecting certain pre-existing lots from increased zoning requirements provided that they meet certain criteria, which 34 Wentworth did not and does not meet. By adopting the minimum in 1974, North Andover acted in accordance with the zoning act. North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 195-7.8A, provides that only lots that meet the conditions contained therein are entitled to the protection from increased lot area setback and frontage requirements. There is no language in the zoning bylaw that reaches back to the bylaws in effect in 1972, and that leaves undersized lots in North Andover without protection. Additionally, a town bylaw will only be interpreted as providing more generous protection than the zoning act if the bylaw expressly states such intent, and there is no language which expresses such an intent, which means that the board has no authority to provide that protection. The legal conclusion from council is, as the lot at 34 Wentworth Street is undersized and does not meet minimum criteria of 5,000 square feet with 50 feet of frontage, it is not entitled to any pre-existing non-conforming zoning protection and is subject to the current zoning dimensional requirements. The application of that legal conclusion to the facts, in my opinion, the building inspector was correct in denying the building permit because the lot does not meet the dimensional requirements and is not eligible for protection from the current zoning requirements because it does not meet the criteria of having at least 5,000 square feet of lot area and 50 feet of frontage. So that is my whirlwind effort at synopsizing town council's opinion. Once again, I do not pretend to have mastered all of the laws underneath it or necessarily the rationale behind it. I am mostly a mouthpiece for the conclusions. So that being kind of the star of the show, I don't know that we necessarily need to litigate the entirety of the facts of the applicant's application for the findings in order we necessarily need to hear the objections of the neighborhood butters, all those folks. Again, what I would do is look up and down the table at the board members and up at the sky and ask anybody if they have any discussion that they'd like to make about town council's opinion.
I have something I'd like to say. I have town council's opinion, which I have to respect and approve. I think it's only fair that we offer the other council a chance to to read town council's opinion instead of, and you read it, and it's hard to accept everything by, you know, the way you read it, and you read it quite good. Let her have a chance to read it, and let her make her own decision as to what she wants to do. She may want to, okay, take, take back the petition. She may want to let it go forward. I think in for common decency, we should let her read what town council says. Would you like to read it? Am I breaking any laws by doing this?
There's, there's nothing that prohibits you from doing that, Alan. All you're doing is compromising the privilege. And if the applicant has a problem with the conclusion of town council, then the applicant's remedy is to appeal the decision. If...
I think she should have a chance to read it instead of the way you read it.
And the zoning board doesn't necessarily have to take that entirely under advisement. You can ignore that entirely, or Michael can ignore that entirely.
I understand, but I think she has a right to know what town council said. Okay? There's two sides to the story. She has a right. She's a taxpayer. He's a taxpayer. What's the problem with letting them know what's going on?
There's a...
Why do we have to keep it in secret?
Okay, well, just clarify. Would you, one more time, you said, you said that if that is, if Allen proceeds, what is the risk or what is the consequence?
Just the risk is that the memo is exposed, the privilege is broken, and the materials that, of that memorandum...
What privilege? Isn't this public information now? We're at a public meeting.
So that's why it says right here, Allen, it says attorney-client privilege confidential. So that is, that memorandum is designed for our eyes only. It is not designed for...
I disagree with that. I think we're at an open meeting, and the council should have access to all, to all the information we have.
So by reading it, that doesn't, that's not the same as handing it out?
And by you reading it, doesn't that say the same thing?
I know you didn't read the whole thing.
Okay, but you reading it, doesn't that say the same thing as her reading it herself?
No, because the underlying material in that memorandum, all the very, the legal analysis and...
So you're withholding information from, from, from the other party?
And if the other party has...
So is that why you're withholding information from the other party?
Look, Alan, I don't need to, I don't need to fight with you about this. There is no cop at the door telling you not to give that memorandum away. I'm just suggesting to you that it is beyond the design and intention of an attorney-client privileged document to be handing, to be handing it over to anybody that you want to.
I disagree. Do I think she should have a right to say?
I just told you that there is not a cop standing at the door preventing you from doing this, Alan. If you are so intent on giving away the legal position of the town, then by all means, pass it across the table. Hand it to attorney.
Would you like to see this, council?
And you can, and she can do with it as she pleases.
Wait a second. Alan, Alan, I don't agree with, Alan, I don't agree with you giving them that memorandum because it's, because it's for us to determine if this is a finding. So I, I don't, I think as a boy, we should decide if the applicant should get it, not just you handing it to them.
Isn't this public information?
That was asked and answered.
It is not.
It is us as a board asking for advice from...
He just read the memorandum to her.
He chose a selection of it.
I read highlights of it, yeah. I did. In, in order to avoid the naked appearance of an outcome that says, Towns Council says building inspector is right, I decided to, I did, I made a determination to offer some meat on the bones to anybody who is interested in this.
I think it's all, but go ahead.
Any other comments or questions regarding town council's opinion or the use of it? So just as a reminder, nobody on the board is bound to the conclusions of the, of town council. You can vote as, you know, as you see fit. It may not be persuasive to you. You may think it's wrong. You may think it's wrong headed.
And I, we asked council to provide us their advice or their, or their feedback, their research, and we have it. And so I'm comfortable with the information that we've been given. I don't see a need to take the, to, to take the information and pass it around. We asked for it for our, for our own knowledge, and we have it.
As a board, aren't we supposed to operate in, in the open? Or do we operate in secrecy?
It's not, it's not a secrecy game.
Isn't it an open meeting? Aren't we on TV? Isn't it an open meeting? Are we trying to hide something? If we're doing something wrong, what's there to hide?
No, we're not. We're not trying to hide anything. We merely are, we are merely acting on the, on the research that was done that we asked to be, that we asked to be completed.
So shouldn't the other side have an option to explain?
They are not our adversary.
They're not our adversaries?
No. The applicant is not our adversary.
Unless, unless and until the applicant appeals the decision of the board, at that point, the applicant will be issued, you know, us individually as board members. So right now, no, there is no, there is no adversarial relationship. 100% agreed. And if the board makes a decision and somebody either, you know, if we say no to the applicant, the applicant can appeal. If we say yes to the applicant, then certainly an butter can, can appeal. And at that point, there is an adversarial relationship. So this is something that should, I would, I'm arguing, should be protected in the adversary, in the context of a prospective adversarial relationship.
What is there to protect? It's a legal opinion. Shouldn't it stand on its own merits?
So, and, and it will stand on its own merits. If there is, if there is an appeal, then the parties can fight it out in court. And yes, at that point, it is absolutely public information which way the, the motions and memorandums are under.
I don't know why we should, we have to hide this from her.
Once, once again, Alan, there is, there is nobody standing here with a gun to your head telling you what to do. If you want to throw away the, the legal protections that have been afforded to you by an attorney-client privilege, then you are more than welcome to do that. I would disagree with it. I'm not going to stand on my head or beat the table. I will shake my head in wonder at the recklessness of doing so, but you are free to do it.
Can the voice in the sky say something before Alan gets off his seat?
You're right.
Alexandria, take it away.
So, Alan, I, the way I see it, and maybe this will help you in, in there not being like a cloak of secrecy, is the information that Paul provided to the applicant's attorney, that right there can be enough for her if she chooses to ask for a continuance and use that information to do, go, go do what she's paid to do and find her own research to oppose that position. So providing the document to them isn't going to provide some big, huge, miraculous epiphany. But I do think you, you do put into jeopardy the client-attorney relationship, which it feels like the board isn't collectively wanting to do. So I think if the applicant's attorney takes what she heard, and she can always go back and listen to the recording, she can use that information to try and oppose what we're saying as a board or what town council's opinion is. So by not providing it to her isn't, you know, having an upper hand. If that makes any difference for you.
No, it doesn't.
Okay. I tried.
Okay, when you said he read town council's opinion, okay, he read it at a mile a minute. Okay, because like at the end of a movie when they list all the credits, okay, they just go right through the credits real quick, and nobody knows who's starring or who's directing or who's what. Okay? Did he read it? Yes. Was it understandable? I don't think so.
And I think if I was in position of the applicant's attorney, I would sit here and say, thank you for the additional information. I'd like to be able to further look into this. I'm going to ask for a continuance, and the board is going to more likely than not be happy to provide a continuance so that she can go back and listen to the meeting because there's the benefit of it being recorded and get every single word, paragraph, comma, that Paul said.
Alex, you know something? I agree with you.
So if the outcome essentially can be the same for her without you breaking privilege, why not have both?
I agree with Alex. I agree with you.
Problem diverted, possibly.
We'll see. Any, any other discussion, or shall we hit, hit the ball back to the applicant and ask if the applicant wants a continuance in order to address town council, what I read of town council's opinion, or just go forward with the application for a finding tonight? So that's kind of an open question to the board. Any other, anything else regarding town council's opinion, or shall we?
It's not my question. That question is up to her.
Well, but anything before we get to...
Yeah. And nothing, nothing else, Steve?
The ball, the ball's in his pocket.
Michael?
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
So don't we have to determine if it's a finding or not? Why is it on the applicant's withdraw? Shouldn't we determine if we agree with the finding of the building inspector and then continue on?
Well, we're not at, we're not at the point where we're moving on the finding yet, approving or denying the finding. All we are doing, all we're doing is talking about the town council's opinion, which is a step along the way. And so the, the question that will be thrown to the applicant is whether or not they want a continuance in order to more, more, by discreetly, I mean specifically, address the points in the memo at another meeting.
Do you feel that, does the board feel that they're delaying the outcome? I mean, because the finding is pretty clear cut, in my opinion.
I mean, the, the recommendation of town council is not our finding. Those, those are not one in the same.
Correct.
And, you know, our finding to, to Mr. Kuscha's point, has to be public, right? Like, our, our discussion and our rationale and our, our justification has to be public. And what town council wrote is not at all binding. And so we can, we are free to agree or disagree with that advice as we see fit.
So I don't understand what we're, we're hashing out, that we're just giving the opportunity to continue?
So Ellen, here, from what I'm getting at, is basically town council has given us her legal opinion on this issue. Now the question becomes is, does the applicant's attorney want to go do their own research and say, uh, 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 town council, you're wrong, and here's why you're wrong? And that possibly will change the board's viewpoint on the outcome.
Is this just delaying the, the process, or is this...
Does it have...
It depends whether board members are on the fence and whether the applicant's attorney wants to take a crack at, you know, disputing what town council has to say.
By asking the question, does this just delay the proceedings, Ellen? There's, there's a judgment in there, and the answer is yes. Any continuance delays the proceeding, but the object of the discussion right now is not just to delay the proceedings. The object is to give the applicant an opportunity to rebut. Does that have the effect of delay? Yes. But is it just to delay? No.
I mean, if, if we as a board feel that we are done, that we do not want to discuss this anymore, we do not have to grant a continuance even if it is asked for. We, we do have that option.
That is true. That's absolutely correct.
I think it would be fair to grant it though, myself, because...
That, that's fair. Just to Ellen's point, if we do not feel a continuance is justified on our end, that we have that choice, right? That it is, there's two pieces to the choice. There's, the, the applicant must decide if they want a continuance, and then we must decide if we want to accept it. And both of those have to happen, or else we decide tonight.
That's right. A series of if then statements. So anything else from the board? Voices in the sky? Nothing. Attorney Kiefer, you want to come on up? The applicant as well. Feel free.
Evening, and happy New York, everyone.
Thanks so much.
With respect to the, the portions that were presented to us from town council's opinion, can I ask, I'll, I'll get into this, my, kind of my thoughts on this in a second, but you referenced, I thought, one citation, Mr. Chairman. Did you, did you reference a citation in that?
Citation to case law?
I'm not certain what it was a citation to. I didn't have my pen ready to write it down, so...
No, I, I did not. All I did was, the only citation that perhaps I made was North Andover bylaw, zoning bylaw, Section 195-7.8A. Yeah, that's the only cite, to the extent that's cited. I just, I referred to 72, 74, and 76 legislative action, both at the town and state levels.
Okay. Did you, did you reference 16RC13 by chance?
I, if I did, not purposely. I mean, I don't have a 16R13 in, in the notes.
Okay. I thought I heard you saying numbers, and there was a reference in, in Mr. Hutchins' memo that we were presented with at the last hearing, so I just didn't know if that was a carryover reference to it. That was...
I, I didn't purposely anyway. I didn't.
Okay. I'm just wondering. I, I, on behalf of the applicant, we're pleased to be before the board again this evening, and also we respect your vigorous debate over this issue. Yes, I mean, if, if the applicant has a say in this, ideally, we would like to have an ability to review town council's memo. I respect the position that the majority of the board members don't seem to want to do that. However, based on the information that was provided and, and an ability to watch the recap of the meeting, I think it would be useful for us to have an ability to kind of pull in what you said from that memo and to respond to it. And we are not seeking to delay this matter, but this, this is the second hearing. As you recall, at the last hearing, we got the building inspector's memo that hadn't been. So we're, we're constantly in somewhat of a reactive, on our feet mode. And we can try to do that, but I think in, in all fairness, if we had an opportunity to more fully respond to the, the position of town council and where we have disagreement and to review that, it would be helpful to this board as well as to the applicant, obviously, to have a full and fair discussion on, on the basis of this. And so I think that we would request for a continuance to, to be able to rehear it and, and provide a, a response to the board, and we're happy to do that sufficiently in advance of the hearing so the board isn't on its feet on the night of the hearing, taking that. I guess the second part of my comments are, I don't know if town council's letter then goes on to the second hearing, and it may be the same request that we may have at that. I'm not quite certain how you're intending to address the second part, so I don't know if you want to...
The, the second part being the variance?
The variance, exactly. Excuse me. But in terms of, because it seems to me that they do go hand in hand. You can't almost do one without the other because if the board were to agree with our position and our appeal of the building inspector's decision that this should be grandfathered, then you don't get to that second part.
Correct.
And I, I think that that's all I have, but if the board has any specific questions of myself or the applicant, I'm trying to think, you have anything to say?
Some, I'm not sure that the, that, I'm not trying to complicate things, but I do want to, want to address the point, which is, does the, does town council's opinion carry over into the variance conversation? And I, I don't think that there is anything in town council's memorandum that actually gets into the, the variances themselves. It's really just about the grandfather, you know, the air quotes, grandfathering, or whatever the operations are by which the application thinks that, is arguing that there is a, there are protections involved. If, if the protections are, sounds so judgmental, but if the protections are disposed of, then we still have the variances in front of us. There is not a component of town council's memo that talks about the variances themselves.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification because as, as you may recall, at the last hearing, we also made the, the, we took the position that if the, if the board does not agree with our position, that this lot is grandfathered and therefore should be entitled to a building permit as a right, then with respect to looking at the variance requests, the proper section would be 195-7-8, and it's only then a de minimis waiver of two and a half feet of frontage and 400 plus square feet of lot size. So I didn't know if town council was asked to weigh in on that part. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Right on. Well, and to, to be fair to the applicant, because it's likely that she's going to go back to it, but the board, the applicant has provided a pretty comprehensive memorandum that discusses, you know, a bunch of the grandfathering, so those are already in our materials. My suspicion is that she'll rely on, on that again to highlight some of the, some of the, or amplify some of the points. the, or amplify some of the points in there. But this is just, just letting the board know that the applicant has already made a legal statement. And so in, in many ways, always had, the town council is just rebutting that opening statement regarding the legal stuff, the technical, technical stuff.
So Paul, can I ask, so if the applicant obviously is going to look at it and rebuttal, because she's a lawyer and she's getting paid to work for her client, which, you know, as she should, so now this, is this going to go back and forth to town council? And I, I just don't want something going back and forth and having another meeting, going another, another month, and delaying the whole process. Not so much delaying, but actually, yes, delaying the process. So they're going to come back with the rebuttal, and we're going to have to have our town council look at the rebuttal. So is there something that we can do?
Then certainly there would, the, the board would take a, a good, hard look at it. They'll have town council's opinion and two pieces of, two different opinions, maybe they're not necessarily different, but two complementary legal analyses from the applicant and the board, hopefully, in the next month, reads all of that material and will come to its own conclusion. You know, are we going to be playing a game of tennis whereby there's a rebuttal and a rebuttal and a rebuttal and a rebuttal? You know, is that possible? Yeah. I mean, if the, if the weight of the board is such that it wants yet another rebuttal, then by all means, we will, we will do that. If the board is, has, has determined amongst itself, themselves, that they have enough information, that they're perhaps, just, just to be crass, maybe there is no answer. And it's just a choice of, you know, tomato, tomato or tomato, and I, you know, I like tomato better than tomato. That's, you know, entirely within the discretionary, the discretion of the board.
Let me ask you something. Don't you think that the applicants are going to get sick and tired of paying legal bills and want to draw to a conclusion? I mean, you think the applicant has a, a tree full of golden dollar bills here? It's the wintertime, there's no leaves on the trees.
And, and if that were the case, then...
I mean, sooner or later, you want to call it, call it quits, right?
Well, yeah, we'd like to get a little, it'd be nice to get some closure.
Right, well, I would like to think so, and so, I'm sure she's not working for nothing, right?
We don't, I don't even know, to be honest.
Well, I'm positive she's a lawyer. She's not working for nothing. The minute they have an Esquire after their name.
But Ellen, you have had, they've been doing this for twenty years.
The point, I think that the easy counter to that, Ellen, is if the applicant doesn't want to spend any more legal bills, then the applicant can look across the table and say, "Hey, Mr. Board Members, would you take the vote?"
And, and is right here the, and they can do that today?
He can.
Yeah, I wouldn't be, I don't know if I'm ready to do that right now.
Excuse me, Paul, can you hear me?
I can.
Um, I just, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to remind you or make you aware that it's my understanding that the board would need to vote at a public hearing in order to waive the privilege...
I'm, I'm, I didn't follow...
Of the attorney-client privilege.
I'm sorry, Jen. Would you, would you repeat it? I may have missed a word or two.
Absolutely. It is my understanding that the board would need to vote at a public meeting in order to waive the privilege.
Okay. Look, these, the uncharted waters for me, everybody, by the way.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand what she's saying. So, so shall we have a motion to invoke privilege? If there, is there a motion to invoke privilege?
Well, to break, to break the...
Explain that a little bit clearer, to revoke privilege.
Well, now, now I might, I might have misheard. Hey, Jen, I'm terribly sorry, does there need to be a vote to break privilege or a vote to invoke privilege?
To break the attorney-client privilege.
Break privilege, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion made, is there...
I make, I make a motion to break attorney-client privilege, if that's the right definition of it.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Michael, motion made and seconded, I will go up the roll. Give me a second, everybody.
Paul, before you go up the roll, I'm not voting on...
That's right, I'll, I'll skip you.
...34.
I'll skip you.
But does the privilege, but does the privilege issue, is that different?
No, it's, it's under the auspices of 34.
Okay.
So I will go...
Hold on, Paul, before you go forward, so, just, I needed a little more clarity. Are we voting to say that...
We're voting to pass the memo across the table to the applicant. That's what, a yes vote passes, passes the memo to the applicant.
Can I ask another question?
Anything.
Is it a majority vote or is it a supermajority vote?
Majority vote, three votes.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion from the board?
Who's voting that?
That's a very, that was my next question to Jen. Thank, thank you, Jen, for chiming in. Jen, who is the next vote of the associates?
Michael.
Michael, thank you. We will start with, again, I'm sorry, everybody. Anything else from the board before we go to a vote? Seeing and hearing nothing, we will go to a vote to break privilege and share the memorandum with the applicant. Up the roll, Michael?
Aye.
Michael is an aye. Alexandria?
No, no, Alexandria is off.
Alexandria's off, that's, thank you. Ellen?
No.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan? Oh, not, no, I'm sorry, not Ron. And me, I'm an, I'm a no, so we've got a three to two, right?
Uh, it's two-two, right?
That's four.
That's two. One, two, three, four, that's right, we don't have Ron. So Steve or Frank, who's the next vote, Jen?
Frank.
Frank.
Oof.
You woke, woke up this morning with this in mind, did you?
Wow.
Aye. Aye, to break privilege, pass the memo. Is that, that's, I just want to make sure that's what I heard, yes?
Yes.
All right, yes, so the motion passes. Mr. Kousha, do you want to hand it over to the applicant? Thank you for the procedural note, Jen, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So with that in hand, I assume that you don't want to rebut that tonight, so shall we continue? All right.
That would be the applicant's request, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you. Jen, do we need another waiver from the applicant?
Yes, we will.
All right, thank you. Is that something that we have to do tonight, or can that be done tomorrow?
Uh, it will have to be done tomorrow.
Okay. So applicant will weigh the time standards. We are now just at, is there a motion to continue, or do we need to discuss the continuance? Because as somebody pointed out, I forget, we don't, we can't...
I make a motion to continue until the following month.
What's the date, Jen? Jen, Jen Battersby?
February 8th, sorry.
February 8th, thank you. So there's a motion to continue to February 8th, Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Frank has seconded, motion made and seconded, I will go up the roll this time. Steve?
Yes.
Steve is an aye. Michael?
Aye.
Aye. Ellen?
No.
Mr. Kousha?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so four to one, we are continued to February 8th. So the next item on the agenda is regarding the variances, looking across the table at the applicant, shall we do the same?
We would request that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on continuing the variances?
Yes. You have the information. This has been continued several times. I would like, if possible, for this to end at the February meeting, so it doesn't drag on.
We would like that, too.
Okay? I mean, I think the town has been more than cooperative, okay, giving you an equal opportunity, a fair chance, you have the information, you surely will have the flavor of the board, but, but let's end it, one way or the other. That's my feeling. It's, maybe it's not the board's feeling. I, you know, we just can't go on and on, no.
We appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you.
I have one additional question. So given that we have revoked the, our privilege with regards to the, the opinion of town council, does that also become a public document, or is that a document that we simply handed to the applicant?
I don't know the answer. It's a good, fair question, Michael. I, I think that it's now fair game to the, to the rest of the world.
Yeah, and so the question is, do we include it with the minutes, for example, or something of the sort?
It will likely become an exhibit to a decision once it's ultimately made.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good question, Michael. That's a baby question.
So since we've revoked the privilege, should we not make a copy available to the people in the galley as well?
That was exactly my question.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and then you, you jumped on it. It sounded like you guys had a longer view, and you know, if it gets attached to decisions, that good enough? And that's a question, that's the question I was going to ask town council, is this something that is now distributable, you know, out, out to the world? And I have an, my imagination is that it is now distributable to the world. It's not, it's not, our privilege has not been broken for a specific individual discrete purpose.
My question is, why shouldn't it be?
It, it's a matter of whether or not we would need another vote. You know, we, we've just made a vote specifically to give, to revoke privilege in the case of the applicant. Do we need a second one, or is it just we revoke privilege, it's open, everybody can have it? I don't know the answer to that question.
And that is, that is an environment where there is a rift that we need to, you know, so now, if we've given it to one party, we need to give it to the other, in my opinion.
That's what we just did.
Yeah. Well, we did not, for example, give it, we did not give it, for example, to the building inspector.
But I only heard in the motion that we were going to revoke privilege, I didn't hear that was specific to the applicant.
That's fair. Yeah.
So I, I, again, I mean, everybody's looking for an answer, I don't know the answer tonight. If you guys want to make it up as we go along, by, by all means, but I said that I would ask town council tomorrow, what happens next? If that's unsatisfactory, then I don't know what to tell you.
I, I'm satisfied.
Hand it over to anybody that you want. So there's a, oh, Jesus Christ, what?
How you doing? My quick question to you is, when you do ask her, ask town council, can you also ask her what the, the pros and cons of breaking privileges?
No, I will not, you may, I will not. Is there, there is a motion to continue to February 8th, the matters of the variances? Is there a second? I think there was. And I was going up the roll. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ellen?
No.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I am an aye. So we are continued to February 8th on the second matter. And that is everything on 34 Wentworth. We are still in public hearing, we're going to have board elections tonight. Thank you all for coming, and we'll, I imagine, we'll see you in February.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So we'll just wait for the room to clear a little bit, and then with the rustling, and then we will move on to the last item, or the next to the last item on the agenda before the adjournment. There is still a public hearing going on here, folks. If you need to have conversations, we have it in the hallway, and we'll see you in February. All right, so the last item on the agenda, everybody, is elections, which we do every January. I think we, I have said over and over again that I will be departing the board in June. It is, I don't think it's necessarily the best thing for me to be in, in an officer position. It is my understanding, and Ellen can certainly confirm, that Ellen is not going to be accepting her next appointment either. Ms. McIntyre, is that true, or are you changing your mind?
I am absolutely done.
So that...
Sorry to hear that, Ms. McIntyre.
Ellen, when you say you're happily done, what, your appointment ends in June?
That is correct.
Yep, both, both of us, end in, end in June, yeah.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
I think you're 23, you're next summer, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't remember the glorious dates.
When did the, the new, the board officers change, after the election, or when you, when you leave?
Nope, so February.
So next year?
There will be a new slate of officers in February, correct. That is correct. So since I'm not going to be around and Ellen's not going to be around, we are not necessarily the best candidates to be officers?
There'll be a new slate of officers in February, not in June?
Correct.
I thought you said that you and Ellen both, oh, because your appointments expire in June?
Yeah.
And so you'll be sitting on the sidelines until June comes?
Exactly.
I get it, okay.
So unfortunately, associate members are not recognized by 48, which means associate members cannot be officers. Once Ellen and I leave, then the associate, the associate members that are air quotes promoted to full members will certainly be eligible for officer positions. I suggest all of that only because if there is a need, and gosh, I hope that there is not, if there is a need for me to sit as an officer, whether it's the first, second, or third seat, I do not want it to be the first, I would certainly be willing to do so, provided that everybody understands that when June rolls around, there's going to need to be an election of a, of somebody to fill that seat. Once again, we have three full members presently. We have Ellen, we have Alexandria, and we have, oh, golly, and Ron, that's right. And Ron has been the, the vice for the last, you know, several months and...
But my understanding is that he was going to offer himself as tribute.
He, he, good way of putting it. So he has been paying attention to all the correspondence that Jen and I have been doing, he's been reviewing the decisions along the way, he's been just, you know, a part, a part of the quagmire, so he's been trained up. There is nothing about the last several months of Ron being in training that binds the board to elect him as the chair. I think that it's a sensible move, if I had my way, frankly, that we would have kind of a, a forced order of succession, that people would get their training wheels as clerk, and then if, if they wanted to be the vice, then they'd be the vice, and then a couple of years later, you would automatically ascend to the chair. I don't know that our terms necessarily work well enough for that, you know, three-year terms. But it is, has always been my concept that somebody who is the vice is the next chair, and it should be in relatively short order, not eight-year chairs, not 10-year chairs, but two, three, four years at the most chairs. That, that is just my philosophy. There is nothing written that says any of that stuff. And certainly, once I roll off the board, it matters even less than it does now what my opinions are. So Ron is away this week, he is still offering himself, himself as tribute, that's wonderful language, thank you for that, Michael.
Well, I thought the rule was, if you don't show up, you become chair.
We have said that in the past, haven't we?
We have, January meetings, you need to show up. Whenever you are chair.
Thank you for that reminder, Ellen, what a treat. And so there's, so we have Ron, Alexandria, and Ellen. It would be my assumption, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Mr. Clerk, but you've got a lengthy history of being the clerk, if you would like to do that for another year, that makes sense?
I think I do a wonderful job as a clerk, and, and I wouldn't want it any other way.
But, but certainly with your longevity on the board, you would certainly be a candidate to be the, the vice if that were, something that were attractive.
I would respectfully decline to be the vice.
All right, so that, that puts...
I do a lot of vices, but I don't want to be this vice.
That puts Ms. Jacobs on the hot seat to be vice, unless Ms. Jacobs is saying that she wants to be chair. Seeing and hearing nothing like that from Ms. Jacobs.
I, I, oh, I, connection, really, that, that, that...
Then I would just, just for the sake of moving things along, actually, I'm, I'm chair, I'm not allowed to make a motion to nominate Ellen as clerk.
So I, I can, as a last act...
Do it, Ms. McIntyre, do it.
I, I make a motion for our next board members, for Ron to be chair, Alex to be vice, and Ellen to be clerk.
You just said Ellen twice. You just said Ellen twice.
Alan, no, it's my, it's my Boston accent.
Alex.
Oh, Alex.
She said Alex for vice, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Alex for vice, okay.
So motion made. One of the things about the zoning board that we changed when I became chair is that everybody gets to vote in these, so that's just to be clear, although forty-eight doesn't recognize associates for purposes of officers, we could, they can be recognized for purposes